Good evening and welcome to the December Regular Meeting of the Board. Joy, could you take off?
Mr. Winklevon?
Here.
Mr. Shear?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKune?
Here.
Mrs. Martin?
Here.
Mrs. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Geary?
Here.
If you'd join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will begin with recognitions and awards. Cody?
Good evening. I am thrilled to present our recognition tonight. I'd like to welcome all of our distinguished honorees and their guests. We're going to begin our recognition with a very special partner that is near and dear to all of our hearts, the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. I'd like to ask Heather Schoonover from Community Development to come forward and assist with this recognition. I'd like to ask the following to come forward and be recognized on behalf of the foundation: Executive Director Cindy Von Feldt, Foundation Board Members Kathy Meyer, Brian Geary, Amy Martin, Dave Rock, Darren Odom, and Candy Birch. The mission of the Olathe Public Schools Foundation is to connect financial and volunteer resources to enhance excellence in the Olathe Public Schools. During the 2017-2018 school year, more than $1,112,000 was donated to district programs. Some of the highlights of the previous year include need-based support. The foundation supports students beyond academics, programs including the Wimmer Student Care Fund, Dr. B's Musical Instrument Fund, the Avid Lifetime Learners, the ALL Fund, the Student Health Emergency Fund, and the Backpack and School Supply Program are just a few of the ways the foundation supports students to ensure that they are in school, ready to learn. Twenty-first century career and technical education, the foundation has raised more than $75,000 to fund state-of-the-art equipment, software, tools, program fees, and scholarships for the Olathe Advanced Technical Center programs. These programs are preparing students for their future in an ever-changing job market. Leader in Me, the Franklin Cuthy Leader in Me program focuses on developing soft skills in students, skills like teamwork, self-discipline, communications, and grit. The foundation made a second, four-year, $80,000 commitment to bring the Leader in Me program to four additional Olathe elementary schools. Commitment to mental health: This year, the foundation will continue to support mental health therapists in the schools, as well as provide new funding for staff training and trauma-informed care, and for emergency health assessments for students. The recent Autumn Breakfast raised $169,000 in sponsorships, ticket sales, which directly go to fund classroom grants. At the event, the foundation shared the inspiring story of Azalea Morales and invited the audience to join her in endowing a scholarship for career and technical education students in her name. More than $30,000 has been raised so far. It is our honor to express sincere appreciation for your consistent financial and volunteer resources to the Olathe Public Schools. Thank you. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Olathe West Counselor Alicia Jackson to come forward along with Principal Jay Novacek. Alicia was named Kansas School Counselor of the Year by the Kansas School Counselor Association. The recipient of this award is selected on the criteria of school counseling innovations, effective school counseling programs, leadership, and advocacy skills, and contributions to student achievement. Additionally, Alicia is now eligible for the National School Counselor of the Year Award. Congratulations and best of luck. We have another important recognition from the Kansas School Counselor Association. I'd like to ask Manchester Park Elementary Principal Sean Bohan to come forward along with Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Education, Mr. Tim Reeves. Sean was named 2018 Kansas School Counselor Advocate of the Year by the Kansas School Counselor Association. This award recognizes important partnerships of school counselors and school administrators in providing services to Kansas schools. Congratulations. All right, we'd next like to recognize some outstanding athletic honors. Carrie Lane and Caleb Stoppel, would you please come forward? I'd also like to ask that the Olathe East Boys Soccer Team come forward. The Olathe East Boys Soccer Team earned the Kansas 6A State Title in front of the hometown crowd at the College Boulevard Activity Center in Olathe. During the course of their season, they netted 68 goals and ended their season with a record of 17 wins, three losses, and one tie. Congratulations on your honor. Are your parents here? We'd love for your parents and family members to stand and be recognized as well. We have got another Olathe East State Championship we'd like to recognize, so if Principal Carrie Lane and Athletic Director and Assistant Principal Caleb Stoppel could stay up here with us. Would the Olathe East Gymnastics Team please come forward along with Coaches Mallory West, Allison Crumbbeagle, and the rest of the team? The Olathe East Gymnastic Team is the 2018 Kansas 6A State Champions. This is the seventh gymnastics state title in Olathe East history. And in addition, an individual recognition goes to Liz Wayssinger. Please wave. She was the Kansas 6A Balance Beam Champion. Congratulations. And if your parents are here, we'd love for them to stand and be recognized as well. Our final recognition of the evening is the Olathe North Boys Cross Country Team. I'd like to ask the Olathe North Boys Cross Country Team come forward along with Principal Jason Herman, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director Joss Price, Coaches Levi Huesman, Jeff Swift, Jared Weisner, and Kim Dykes. The Olathe North Boys Cross Country Team was the Kansas 6A State Champions. In addition to what's wonderful about this group is that all along, they were great runners, but they also worked with the City of Olathe to start a fundraising effort to collect running shoes for less fortunate runners in the inner-city schools. They hosted a 5K at Olathe North last year and raised a large amount of money and collected numerous pairs of shoes for a donation. Pretty outstanding honor for you all. Congratulations. And if your families are here, we'd love for you to be standing and recognized as well. Thank you. That concludes today's recognitions.
As folks are moving out, we'll go ahead and move into public comments.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped, recorded, for broadcast on the district's educational access channel, and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state their name and address.
And do we have anyone that wishes to make public comments this evening?
Hello? I guess I'm talking really to you guys. We're from Mahaffey Elementary, and this year, we had, really, it started last year. We had a large need on our playground for appropriate equipment for our special ed early childhood classrooms, as well as some other regular ed students who have some disabilities and needs. We have a large, an exceptionally large group of kids who have limited access to playground equipment. They're in wheelchairs. We also have a very large visually impaired population at Mahaffey also. And so, we petitioned and talked with a lot of great, important people in the district to see what we could do about our playground. And the board approved an amazing playground and fully funded an awesome playground for our students. It was just installed. And personal message from one of my students, he said, "Please tell them that we love it and it is amazing every day." So, I told him I would make sure to tell you guys that. So, our early childhood students, with some help of some kindergarten and first graders, made you guys banana, no, not banana, pumpkin bread as a thank you with an amazing large card that they all signed.
Thank you guys.
Any others this evening? Seeing none, we will move along to information presentations. We're going to shift the agenda just a little bit here as our first presenter is not here yet. She's in another meeting, so we'll move to 4.02, K-5 Math Adoption.
Good evening. I'm going to have a couple of brief comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Stevens, our math coordinator. But what we're going to share with you tonight, and primarily what she's going to share with you tonight, is the process and the work that many of our educators, led by Dr. Stevens, have accomplished over many months to recommend a new K-5 math resource.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to meet with you this evening. Our elementary math instructional resource is up for a new adoption, and we are excited about the possibilities that this new adoption is going to bring to our community. During the spring 2018 semester, a committee of classroom teachers, instructional resource teachers, title math teachers, and elementary principals formed a committee, and I'm thankful for their dedication that they served towards math education in our district. Here are the committee members. Forty-two members on the committee. The Resource Adoption Committee met and started the review process by discussing whether to stay with our current resource envisioned or to take this opportunity to consider the new resources that are on the market. The committee chose to look at other resources. We examined 10 widely-used resources and narrowed our selection to six. On the left, you'll see here are the resources that we examined through presentations with their publishers, and on the right are the rubrics that we used to examine the materials closely. First rubric enabled us to compare the rigor of the math content across all six of the grade levels and along with the six resources. The second was to examine the degree to which instruction follows the concrete representational abstract instructional approach for math. And last, the resources were evaluated based on technology assessments and the instructional supports for teachers. In a unanimous decision by all six grade levels, which I understand this is the first for Olathe Public Schools, the committee and learning services recommend that we make available Eureka Math and Zern as our K-5 mathematics resource. There was a clear distinction between our top choice and then the second choice, and so we are only bringing forward the combination of both of these for teachers. Eureka Math is developed by Great Minds, a nonprofit education company that recently celebrated its 10th anniversary. Great Minds Eureka Math has won accolades across the state and national levels, including an independent review made by Ed Reports, and a 2018 brand survey of teachers found that Eureka Math has become the most widely-used math resource in the country for the third year in a row. In an overwhelming agreement, our committee found that the resource is focused on our standards and the major work we focus on at each grade. Rigor is evident in the type of content teachers will assess, and we have daily fluency lessons that are incorporated in it as well. The lessons are designed in a way that promote best practice. Each lesson provides conceptual learning time for students to dig deeper into their standards that they're studying. And pairing it with Zern, an online resource that was created to match Eureka Math, we will have the opportunity to provide high-quality whole-group instruction and small-group instruction. This adoption process has been slightly different from others in the past. The publishers of Eureka Math are a nonprofit, and they do not provide printed materials for teachers to preview or training prior to previewing the materials. We made Module 1 available to each of our teachers at each grade level, and many of them previewed this resource with their students this fall. We collected information about the experience through a survey and have found that our teachers are excited about this resource. Some of that feedback includes that many reported that the resource is aligned with our Kansas standards. Teachers feel that the resource supports the development of students' mathematical understanding, and that it supports the development of students' proficiency with their procedural skills, just to name a few. Here are some anecdotal comments that teachers had made about their experiences. Some aspects of the resource are slightly different from our current resource, which is envisioned. There are different manipulatives that we haven't purchased quite yet, and we are asking that we make Zern available to teachers as well because it's a small-group instructional tool that is based on Eureka Math. We have a cohort of teachers this year that are early adopters. We're calling them the Step Ahead Group. They are working through the curriculum this year with their students, and they are going to help us ensure that we have a tight alignment between the resource and our district curriculum. Some timeline of events that we'll have in the spring semester and in the fall. Once board approved, our plan is to prepare teachers for full implementation in 2019 and 2020. We have several activities planned throughout the spring. We will continue to provide pacing guides and manipulatives for our teachers, and our copy center will help us print the necessary materials our teachers need. Our April District Professional Development Day will focus solely on Eureka Math and Zern. Here are some of the samples, the sessions that we'll provide for teachers. We'll also have some parent nights, so our community can be informed about Eureka Math and Zern. And we'll continue with some trainings in the fall as well. Do we have any questions about Eureka Math?
I do. Thanks, Dr. Stevens, for 42 members looking at this so thoroughly. Is this part of the replacement cycle for textbooks? And what is that cycle year-wise? When was the last time we did it?
It happened seven years ago, prior to me entering into the district. So, seven years ago, and we have a, Learning Services has an adoption process that we follow to ensure that we are following the same set of procedures with each of our new curriculum adoptions.
And so, are we staying on the seven-year cycle then? And what's the plan?
It remains to be seen. Eureka Math is a free resource, an open educational resource that's available online, and it's something that they are going to continue to update. They have a new source coming out, a revision of their resource, coming out in 2021. So, it may be a point there where we might want to examine it before the seven-year cycle is up to take a look at their new, their updated version.
So, there's no textbooks?
There are PDF versions of the textbook that we will publish and make into textbooks for students.
Great. And so, since it's free, it's saving us money?
It is, certainly.
Do we know how much by chance? I mean, how much we typically spend on books? That's something big.
So, this being an open educational resource, there is no cost for the resource, and so all the costs that will incur will be through the manipulatives that either we make or we purchase. So, primarily, the work of our printing shop will help us produce this new resource for our system. I don't know the exact number, but our last elementary math resource that we purchased was well over a half of a million dollars. So, certainly not a reason to choose a resource, but we recognize that this is a good savings to us and honestly will help us probably in some other areas as we continue that seven-year revision cycle and those kinds of things as well. Certainly not to reason, but it's a nice benefit for us as we've found a resource that meets our teachers and our students' needs.
That's great. And I didn't hear you mention Common Core curriculum at all. And I know when Common Core came out, I mean, it was back when I first started serving, and they started doing kind of weird math, you know? And we heard from a lot of parents, is this just going down the same line? Or is it making any revolutionary changes?
I would say the revolutionary changes. It does align with the Kansas math standards, and those are the standards that help us decide what instructional resources we pick, and we base it on best practice.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Appreciate it. Perfect. So, we will continue on to 4.03, Portrait of a Graduate.
Good evening. It's our pleasure to be here this evening to visit with you about the Portrait of a Graduate. And I'll share with you that this work actually stemmed with Mr. Allison and SLT. Last spring, as we started thinking about the strategic plan, we know that this was the year that we wanted to write it. And so, in doing so, we really wanted to focus our energies on beginning with the end in mind. And we love our vision statement, "Students prepared for their future." So, as we were thinking about the strategic plan and the work we wanted to do, the questions that you see on the monitor are kind of what led us in this direction. So, what are the hopes, dreams, and aspirations that our community has for students? What are the skills our children need for success in this rapidly changing and complex world? And what are the implications for learning experiences that we want to provide in our school system? So, in that, we wanted to start with our current graduates and think about the 13 years that they have spent with us. So, you see here four representatives of different pathways that our students can go through. At the top, you'll see Allison, and Allison goes to a comprehensive high school. At the bottom, there's Kyle. Kyle was a graduate of OATC. In the middle, there's Hugo, and he graduated from a 21st Century Academy. And then, the last student is also another Kyle. Kyle has been in our special education program since before kindergarten and is currently in our 18 through 21 program. And those were just four students that we picked, but the point in case is that we want all students to be successful after they leave us, no matter what trail they're blazing. And so, in doing that, we then wanted to start, we wanted to think about when these guys were in kindergarten, and what did life look like? And what have they traveled in the 13 years they were with us? So, we highlighted to Mr. Allison this activity with us, but these are some of the things that were created since the class of 2018 started kindergarten with us. The selfie stick, Spotify, Airbnb, Snapchat, Pinterest, Square, YouTube, Facebook, and of course, the smartphone, which keeps all of these things intact, right? So, we think about, these are our everyday activities, our everyday devices that we go to, and how quickly the world has changed because they weren't even invented when the class of 2018 started kindergarten. And we know that the world is just going to continue to change at a very rapid pace. So, in doing that, we came back to this conversation about what is a portrait of a graduate? And we know that our students have many choices after they graduate. Some of our students will go right into the workforce. Some will go to college. Some will travel. Some will go to trade school. Some will take even different paths. They have a myriad of experiences that they can do. But what we know is that we want to have them prepared for whatever that world looks like, how quickly it changes. And we know that our incoming kindergarteners, over 60% of the jobs that they will have have not yet even been created. And so, we really do need to think about what are those skills that they need, knowing that the world is going to change. And so, in doing that, we knew that this wasn't a task that we could do on our own. We really wanted to circle the wagons and bring our community in together. We wanted this to be a very collective effort and an effort that was owned by the community. And so, you see there are some pictures from the time that we spent together, but we had representatives from the communities of faith, the business industry, higher education, county and city government representatives, community members at large, social service agencies, district leaders, school leaders, parents, teachers, and students. And together, we started talking about those questions. How do we prepare students for a world that we don't even know what it's going to look like? So, let me introduce to you the class of 2032. These are the students that will be entering our doors next year as kindergartners. And as we think about the strategic plan, we have to think about these faces, and we have to think about their futures, and how are we going to prepare them for those jobs that haven't even been created yet? So, you see Omari. He's first. Omari wants to be a police officer. In the middle is Annie Page. She's the one that's challenging us because she wants to be a unicorn trainer. So, we have our work put out for us. And then, last, we have Nikki, and Nikki wants to be a ballerina. Now, it can be a little daunting to think about what does their future hold? And so, we found a video that actually helped us really realize how quickly and rapidly this world is changing. So, that's a daunting question that all of us have a lot of skin in the game in right now, is will our children be ready, right? And we know there has to be a huge paradigm shift in the way that we're doing business now for our students to be prepared for that kind of future. Automobiles that drive themselves, homes that build themselves, surgery that's completed by machines versus people. But we know there's still that human component that has to be a piece of this world. And so, as we brought our constituents together, those were the conversations that we had. We need to move away from that classroom that was getting students ready for the Industrial Revolution and silos and subjects to critical thinking, creativity, collaboration, because as things change, those are the skills that our students are going to need to be leaders in this world. We also know there isn't going to be any cookie cutter approach to the 21st century learning. As again we said, 60% of the jobs haven't even been created yet. And so, there's going to be a lot of creativity and a lot of problem solving that's going to have to go into their future. So, with that, we're very pleased to share with you tonight the work of over 80 people that were on this advisory council and over 1,000 people that have actually given feedback on this vision. You have a copy of this here in front of you. We started with over 30 competencies that we looked at that were in the personal, interpersonal, and personal and interpersonal and cognitive areas. Started with 30, had lots of conversations, took lots of votes, came back a second time with a narrowed focus, had about 15 indicators to look at, and then, from there, we landed on the six. And what is really exciting about this is about five out of the six, over 1,000 people voted on the same ones. So, we really feel like our community is supportive of this, and we're all headed in the right direction. So, on one page, you see those competencies that include critical thinking and problem solving, creativity and innovation, initiative and self-direction, resilience and social emotional well-being, communication, and social and cross-curricular skills. So, we really feel like a nice cross-section of those 21st century skills and what that needs to look like. And then, on the back of that document, you see descriptors of those competencies and what they'll mean. And so, our next chore will then be to take these as we start working on the strategic plan and talking about, what does this really look like, not only in the classroom, but for all of us as an organization? So, with that, it's my pleasure to introduce to you four members of the committee. We have someone from higher education, we have a parent, we have a teacher, and then we have a student, who I asked to take just a couple of minutes each and share what this process was like for them.
Good evening. My name's Sharon Zellner, currently with Baker University, but spent about two-thirds of my career as public educator here in the Johnson County area, and have worked with the DeSoto School District and the Latha School District through that time. So, it was a real honor for me to receive an email asking me to participate in the strategic plan process, because I'm also a trained facilitator for strategic planning, and I believe wholeheartedly, and that's the way to move an organization forward. Mr. Allison and Dr. Dane did an amazing job of corralling 80 people through these meetings to gather this, the information that she's prepared for you tonight. My challenge to us as a team is to make sure the process continues to move forward, because as she's just shared with you, the challenge comes in now is creating those acting steps to make sure we can make this plan happen. I know it's going to happen, and I have watched this district for 35 years, and it's just an amazing, amazing place to be. There are lots of folks here that I've crossed paths with in my career. And again, it was such a pleasure to participate in this, and I really, truly do hope that when the class of 2032 graduates, we will have that unicorn training in place. That will definitely be the challenge. So, thank you again for allowing me to participate, and we stand ready to help in any way that we can through Baker.
Good evening. I'm Theodore Cardas. I'm not the only parent among us, but I suppose I'm the parent representative. And I was just really thankful to receive an invitation to participate in this. And as a parent of four students in the district, and I've been participating on my local psych council since my high school senior was a kindergartner. I've also participated in the Citizens Education Academy, so these types of issues have been important to me and my family. And what it takes to be prepared to enter the working world is a subject that's frequently discussed in my household, not just with me and my wife, but with my kids as well. In fact, just yesterday in the car, my fourth grader said to me, Dad, I think I'm going to start a business. And we talked about that a little bit more, and he eventually determined that I think two of his siblings would participate in that. I'm not going to say who was left out. But that's the kind of, that's the kind of thinking that we do as a family, and I'm so glad that the district is thinking about what the future is going to look like, because that's part of the district's vision statement. And we need to ask that question, not just for the class of 2019, but for the class of 2032. None of us want to, none of us want to prepare our kids for one of those jobs that has now been replaced by an empty, an empty cab at, in a truck or a combine. We want to prepare them for the list of jobs that don't exist yet today, but that will exist in 10 years. So, it's so interesting to me that Dr. Dane used the word daunting more than a couple times, because that's a word that came into my mind several times as I was preparing to come up here this evening. And it is a daunting challenge to think about the future, because nobody can truly predict it, but it's something that you do need to be thinking about. I'm glad, as a parent, that you're thinking about it. As we were going through the process of discussing solutions to this problem, we had, there was a lot of consensus. We didn't always agree about which of the specific wordings or descriptors of these core, core competencies were the best. But even when we didn't achieve consensus, we always found that, I think, that there was some common thread of importance in the ones that we ultimately rejected. For instance, one of them that didn't make the final cut was leadership. Well, who wouldn't say that's not important? Who wouldn't say that's important? But some of the components that make up that skill have components that are found in some of the other things, like interpersonal skills and the ability to collaborate. So, I think that's how we were able to achieve consensus on this. It was really encouraging to see the diversity of perspectives that came into the process. And I think the thing that was most interesting to me is that coming into this, I didn't, I didn't realize how difficult this would be, but it's good to have hard problems, and it's good to be thinking about hard problems, and I'm glad that you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening. My name is Kathleen Smith, and I am the 21st Century e-Communications facilitator, as well as I am a teacher, entertainment video teacher at the Northwest, and I'm on the ONEA Executive Board as the Diversity Chair Member. I'm also a mother of three who attended public schools. I've seen how my own children have made personal workforce decisions after their secondary education. One child went to college for two years and then left to go into full-time work. Another graduated from KU with a bachelor's degree and works for one of the top advertising agencies in Kansas City. My youngest daughter is a sophomore at KU, following her dreams of being a graphic designer. They all made individual choices that were personal to them, based upon their education and their own life choices after they graduated high school. I wanted to speak to you today about this, because I believe the work that we do now for our Latha Public School students in the Portrait of a Graduate is vital for our individual students' development and their personal success. This is why I became a teacher. I wanted all students to be seen, heard, and given a chance to live their best lives. I want all students to learn through a curriculum that prepares them for the 21st century workforce that they may eventually enter. They must be prepared with life skills and knowledge. Each student is a unique individual and has various goals and dreams and career paths. We educators need to do a better job in preparing them for the real world and help them achieve their post-educational pursuits. The Portrait of a Graduate that we worked diligently to create and is that pathway, I believe. It was work that involved us collaborating side by side as Latha community members, parents, teachers, and students. Our overall mission was to create a portrait that would achieve cognitive, personal, and interpersonal skills. After much work, decision, and collaboration, we decided on a strategic focus that was centered on critical thinking skills and problem solving, creativity and innovation, initiative and self-direction, resilience and social and emotional well-being, communication skills, and social and cross-cultural skills for all Latha Public School graduates. These are the skills that will help students understand, recognize, and value others in a workplace environment. In the future, our students will need to know how to analyze and evaluate their creative ideas and make sound judgment and choices. They need to learn how to set goals and persist and to overcome academic barriers. They need to be able to listen to others and communicate effectively in diverse environments. And they need to learn from the work and collaborate with individuals representing diverse cultures, religions, and lifestyles in a spirit of mutual respect and open dialogue in personal work and community. As a 21st century facilitator, teacher, and mother, I know the importance of this Portrait of the Graduate work for the future generation, and I believe it's the right next step for the Latha Public Schools. Thank you.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carla Gutierrez, and I'm a junior at Latha West High School. So, I'm here to represent students now and students that are going to be walking into our buildings the year to come. Looking at these six competencies, you guys see critical thinking, problem solving, all the way to social and cross-cultural skills, all six being fundamental building blocks to a successful person in the workforce and the life outside of the school, like the school. So, going through this process, I've seen this now five times, and each time narrowing down more. So, we started out with 30, I believe, 30 competencies, and I've worked with this, with the Superintendent Student Advisory Council with Mr. Allison, as well as the, yes, Advisory Council with Dr. Dane. And being able to see the different mindsets from students compared to community members, teachers, educators, and parents, you can see that everyone is very transparent in what they want to see in the future. So, 30 years ago, you wouldn't want to see, I don't know how to word this, but like, almost like John Allison said, if we were to teach students now how we teach, like, we taught students 30 years ago, we are setting them up for failure. So, I feel like our Latha School District is very good at being flexible and moving forward and like finding ways in how to accommodate in what the students need for their future. So, when we worked in our committees and we, like, we dived into all these sections, a lot of us agreed on many of the same things. One thing that I agreed on was social and cross-cultural skills, which dives into being able to work with other people that are very like diverse, like how you guys heard the people from Happy Elementary School. They had a lot of diverse people. We need to, and I feel like our students now need to learn how to, how to work with people that are different from each other, not necessarily within the same mindset. So, being a student in the Latha School District, I've been here since kindergarten. Looking back at the elementary schools now, if I go to visit, the schools are completely different from how I was in, and that's something that I like to see, because I didn't need what they need now. So, I lost my train of thought there. So, with all six of these fundamental building blocks, I feel like if we work towards that as a community as a whole, not just students, not just teachers, a community as a whole, we can accomplish a lot for the students of 2032 and even after that.
So, students prepared for their future, right there, huh? That's a great example. But I'd like to thank all four of these committee members for being here this evening. So, at this point, I just would like to open it for any questions that you might have for me or any of the members of the committee.
Do you want to talk a little bit about next steps?
Sure, absolutely. So, we're still, we're still working through some of those, and I, Mr. Allison may want to jump in as well. But what we're doing right now is just beginning to share the message. So, hopefully have your approval on this, and then starting to really dive into, what do those descriptors mean? And then, bringing a smaller group of people together to look at each of those competencies, what does that mean for students in the classroom, outside of the classroom, and what does that mean for us as an organization, for you as the Board of Education, for a senior leadership team and other administrators in the district? Because this really is going to have to be a systems change from the very beginning to the very end. And so, we want to use this as our anchor as we move forward in that. Mr. Allison, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add?
Another key component to this is when we look at these competencies and we decide, what, what does this look like? What, how do we envision a graduate leaving the Latha Public Schools at the same time as we progress? And it's going to be a marathon, not a sprint, to be able to accomplish this, is going to be key for us to identify, how are we going to measure this? Because I think we need to be very, very transparent and upfront that these are, these are the metrics we're going to use to measure our successes as we move forward, knowing that those will always have to be monitored and adjusted. But that'll be another key piece of, of the next steps, is then again, how, how are we going to hold ourselves accountable? How are we going to measure the goals and the plans that we're going to put forward?
I think, John, I think that's really, really important to this, because as I look across the six of these, and I've had the opportunity to be involved with some of these, and also, you know, I'm going to challenge ourselves, because I'm going to, I look at the six here, and I think that we do some of these things today. So, one of the things that I would challenge all of us to say, okay, well, how are we communication? I know that we're working with this, and we're working. So, I'd really like us to be able to set a bench line and say, okay, well, how are we going to improve upon what we're doing today? Because I don't, these are not all new. We might look at them a little bit differently, but I really want to make sure that we understand, again, to your point, John, how are we going to measure that we're making improvements on some of these? Because I think this is very important. Every one of the four committee members, you know, articulated it very well that, you know, the world is going to be different, jobs are going to be different, and we're going to do things differently. But a lot of the stuff that's going to happen then is happening now, too. So, again, how do we just do that improvement? How do we look at it a little bit differently? So, I think just making sure that we understand that and look at it, I think is going to be a great opportunity.
I do want to say thanks to the committee and their, their commitment and diligence. And we've got some representatives that were able to address you this evening, but I believe we have several more. If you were on the Strategic Planning Committee in the audience, would you please stand up just so we can say thank you and recognize you?
No, and I would, I would echo that, and also, thank you, staff, Mr. Allison, Dr. Dane, for your leadership, and also for this group, for the board, because as we've talked about the strategic plan, and we've been talking about it for a couple of years, this was a different way to come at it and a different way to look at it. And I think that many of us have been in strategic planning sessions where, at our places of business or other organizations, where we've taken what was generally working and kind of refreshed it, and, you know, okay, and then we'll just kind of move forward. But to start with the end in mind and to really think about, what do we But to start with the end in mind and to really think about, what do we want our graduates to look like? I'm, I'm just really thankful for, for this group as well because, because we had a part in that. And, you know, the word daunting came up a couple of times. Watching that video, I would add two words to that, and I would say amazing and terrifying. So there's obviously a lot of work to be done, and to Rick's point, we're doing some of that right now, but I think just the, the reshaping of how we're looking at this is really going to set us up for that shift in thinking that I think we're going to need to prepare students for the future that, that we don't know. So thank you. Other questions? All right. Thank you. Moving along, we'll go back up to the top to 4.01, and a legislative update from Cheryl Simmel.
It's good to see you all again. A lot has happened since I was here last. My name is Cheryl Simmel, and as you all know, I work with the Alatha School District to help advance legislative priorities and to better engage our legislative delegation in those issues that are important for the district. So I just want to kind of run down a couple of things that are happening in Topeka, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. As you know, the elections were held earlier in November. Most of this will not be any great surprise to you, but I'll just run through a couple of things. As it stands, we have 85 Republicans in the House, 48 Democrats, but I also wanted to note that we have a couple of changes in the Senate, although this wasn't a year for Senate elections. We had several individuals elected out of the Senate into statewide offices, and so those positions are currently being filled. Three of those positions have already been filled. The fourth one, Vicki Schmidt's seat from Topeka, will actually be decided this upcoming Friday, so then we'll have a sense of what the Senate will look like. Leadership races were held earlier this week on Monday, and that's usually a pretty big event in Topeka. It's the first time that all of the new legislators have the opportunity to come together with those returning and elect leadership for both the majority and the minority parties in the House. Just a real quick run-through for you of what the results of those races were. All of them, I should say, at least the top races were all contested. The Speaker of the House will of course be Representative Ron Reichman from here in Alatha. He'll retain that seat as we enter the 2019 session. One of the biggest changes was that Don Heinemann, who was the Majority Leader, Representative from Dayton, was actually defeated in his race by Representative Dan Hawkins out of Wichita. So Representative Hawkins will come in now as the Majority Leader. Speaker Pro Tem will be Representative Blaine Finch out of Ottawa. The Assistant Majority Leader, Les Mason out of McPherson. The Majority Whip will be Representative Blake Carpenter out of Derby, and then the Majority Caucus Chair will be Representative Susan Humphries out of Wichita. So there are a couple of new names that appear in that leadership lineup. We will certainly, you know, begin working with those individuals as soon as possible. We will see probably committee assignments, at least for committee chairs, begin to come down the pike within the next week or two, I would expect. Full committees usually aren't released until sometime just after the Christmas break, so we'll continue to keep an eye on what those look like. The minority party also held their leadership races. Representative Jim Ward, who had served as the Minority Leader in the House, was defeated in his race. He will be replaced by Representative Sawyer, also out of Wichita. The Assistant Minority Leader was also replaced in the minority leadership team by Representative Winn out of Kansas City. The Minority Whip is Representative Jim Gardner out of Topeka. The Minority Agenda Chair, Representative Brett Parker from Overland Park. The Minority Caucus Chair, Representative Ballard out of Lawrence, and the Minority Policy Chair, Representative Horn, also out of Lawrence. Usually, the majority party will lead, of course, with the chairs and the vice-chairs. The minority party will also then make their appointments to committees, and, you know, it'll be interesting to see what those look like. There has been discussion about whether or not, especially in the area of education, the committee structure will remain the same. You might recall that a couple of years ago, there was a decision to break education into education and K-12 education budget, especially as we began dealing with school finance. There has been some discussion about whether or not that structure will remain the same. So we'll be watching that. But certainly, when we think about issues that will be priorities for the upcoming session, a couple of things I want to touch on. One, revenues, and I'm going to come back to why this actually matters in a minute. Revenues for the year so far are up, above the consensus revenue estimates that were released in November. And you might remember that those were actually revised upwards from where we were last year. So year-to-date, compared to where we were last year, we're up about $221 million as a state. Year-to-date, above the consensus revenue estimates that were released in November, we're probably at about 2.74 million. That becomes really important because as we enter the session, of course, there are a couple of things that legislators need to address. One, of course, is the Supreme Court ruling on the inflationary factor for K-12 education. That will certainly be on the agenda. This last week, there was discussion that there was finally an agreement reached on a transportation plan to carry forward to the legislature. That would be pretty sizable, of course, and require some planning. Usually, that's a five-to-10-year plan. I would expect that that would probably look like five to six years, but that's obviously a big ticket item as well. There will also undoubtedly be some discussion about tax reform. We saw that at the end of the session last year as a result of the federal tax changes, whether or not Kansas wanted to make some adjustments or changes to our tax code. I think there are also some other areas that are probably being eyed in that. So while $221 million above where we were last year sounds like a lot, you can see that it gets spent pretty quickly by the time you address some of those policy priorities. I also certainly want to kind of reinforce something that I think many of you have heard, and that is that we certainly anticipate that there will be continued discussion about a constitutional amendment on education. You know, where all of the numbers following the legislature or the legislative races kind of fall remains to be seen, but certainly we expect that any conversation around K-12 funding would inevitably include some kind of conversation around a constitutional amendment as well. So we'll continue to talk with our legislators about that. Alatha has historically had a position that's been in opposition to that provision, and I think is really joined by most of the districts across the state. With that in mind, one of the things that I want to say is I think that it's really great that districts are beginning to, to meet and talk about what some of the priority issues are. Just a real quick note for you, we talk about the new legislators coming in and school districts of this area. Alatha has seven new legislators in its House delegation. That's seven out of 10 legislators are new faces for the district. I say new, one of them is a returning legislator who served previously. But that means that we have a lot of education and a lot of work to do with the new group coming in, so certainly we'll want to get started on that as soon as possible. But another interesting fact to kind of share with you as we talk about the Johnson County Schools working together and then working with other districts across the state, in this area, there is one member of that 10-member delegation that represents only the Alatha School District. So of all of the other representatives that we have that represent the Alatha School District, most of them touch on another district in this area. And so it, it becomes really important then that as Alatha develops its legislative priorities and the districts in the surrounding area do, that we work together to communicate effectively, not only with the Alatha delegation, but also with the Johnson County delegation at large. So I'm going to kind of leave my remarks there because I don't want to bore you, but certainly answer any questions that you may have about the upcoming session.
Questions for Cheryl?
Are you hearing much about sales tax on food?
You know, I think that that's one that will certainly be part of the mix. Usually when sales tax on food comes up, for those of you who don't know, we're one of the few states that actually has a pretty high sales tax rate on food in the area or in the geographic region. Part of that is a connection to the earned income tax credit. It, it gets a little complicated, but I think that there's some interest in trying to buy down in some way the food sales tax, what that looks like, and, you know, how that fits into a mix. You know, everything, and, and taxes are such a great example of this, everything becomes an issue of trade-off, right? So you inevitably don't get just a policy on, you know, how we address federal tax reform or food sales tax. You inevitably end up with this larger package that's a series of things intended to get the most number of votes. So I certainly think that will be in the mix on any conversation we have about taxes.
And which is the one member that represents only Alatha Schools?
It is.
Is it?
It's Representative Toplicker.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, Cheryl.
Absolutely.
And this would be a good time to talk just briefly about opportunity that we had over the weekend to attend a joint meeting of the six Johnson County School Boards. A lot of, lot of good representation. Thank you for those that were able to make it. I know Kathy Myers out here from Alatha N E A was there, and like, while there, of the six of us, we don't agree on everything, there was a lot of good discussion, and so I was happy to see that and happy to see that there are quite a few things that I think that we do agree upon. So more work to be done, but I was really encouraged to, to see that happen and come together and to just open up that, that line of dialogue, so. Moving along. Action Other, 5.01, the elementary boundary proposal. I think we had a presentation on this last month. Are there any other questions? If not, I'd seek a motion for approval.
This recommended battery change, and so 5.01 is presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Geary.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
5.02, the audit reports for fiscal year ended June 30, 2018, and I believe we have Audrey Odoman from Meis Hauser and Company? Or Cassie?
Good evening. We do have Audrey Odoman here tonight. So I'd like to introduce Audrey to you, and as you're aware, Meis Hauser, we've contracted with them to perform our financial statement audit for the year ended June 30, 2018, and so she will be providing you with an overview of our audit results, and then she will also stand for any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Oh, and one more thing. We have found copies for you, too, later, so.
Good evening. So my name is Audrey Odoman. I'm going to go through the financial statements. Stop me along the way if you have questions. If not, I hope we can address them at the end as well. I'm going to start on page one and two. Page one, always a good place to start. So this letter is our independent auditor's report. It goes through and it talks about management's responsibility in regards to the financial statements, auditor's responsibility and the standards that we use to audit these financial statements, but most importantly, and what you're looking for is the opinion on the financial statements. And that's on the bottom of page one. It's a very long sentence. It talks about all the different components of the financial statements and basically gives an opinion on each component. So each component of the financial statement in that paragraph says that it's an unmodified opinion. So that's the highest opinion that these financial statements can receive. It speaks to the work that the district staff and the directive that you give them, the work that they do throughout the year, not just when we're here for the few weeks that we're here, but all the work that they do throughout the year. I'm going to skip over to page three. This is one of the parts of the financial statements that I really like because it provides management an opportunity to look at the prior year financial information and the current year financial information, information, and give an analysis of transactions that occurred, large events that may have occurred, for instance, bond issuance or new buildings that were put into place. And so this is a really good place to look at a comparison of one year to the next year in management's voice. We move forward to page nine. This is another, nine and 10 are the only pages where the district comes altogether on two pages. It's the closest thing you're going to get to a traditional business financial statement because it basically is a balance sheet and an income statement, per se. And so if you want to look at the district as a whole, those are the two pages that you would look at in these financial statements. Now, we're going to skip forward quite a bit because I want to talk about some, a specialty part of the audit that we work on, and that's on page 86. This is the Schedule of Expenditures of Federal Awards, and this is a special part of the audit that we look at all of those federal awards that the district receives and expends money on. Any governmental entity that spends more than $750,000 in federal aid has to have this special, what we call a single audit. And we go through and we assess the internal controls over this portion of the audit. We look at compliance over the audit, and we select these grants on a rotation basis so that each major program is looked at every three years, making sure that we look at at least 25% of them in a given year. So this year, we looked at child nutrition cluster. You can kind of see that towards the bottom of that schedule. The results of that portion of the audit are on page 88. So if you go through and you look at this, you can see kind of in the middle of the page that the particular grant and this part of the audit receive an unmodified opinion, and right below it, you'll see that there weren't any findings that we noted that would be required to be reported to you in regards to the uniform guidance. So the uniform guidance is what we use and what the district has to adhere to in regards to federal aid, and we didn't have any findings in regard to the uniform guidance. You can see the district is considered low risk in that we did not note any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls. We go on to page 90. This is our second letter of communication in this financial statement, and this one talks about that internal control work that we did. If you read through here again, you're not going to note any material weaknesses and you're not going to note significant deficiencies. We can't give an opinion on, on the internal controls, but we would certainly note any issues that we found with, with those. And then if we move on to page 92, on this report, we look at, again, those federal programs, and we give the opinion within this report. We talk about the technical standards that we use to audit that part of the financial statement and management's responsibility again. We, I just want to say that we do enjoy coming out and working with John and Cassie and their staff. They're very professional, give us the information that we need very quickly, and we appreciate that very much. Any questions?
Questions on audit? All right, seeing none, thank you. And thank you to John, Cassie, and Business Finance, flying colors as usual. Moving along, Section Six, the Consent Agenda.
We need a motion.
We've got, oh, apologies. Seeing no questions, I'd look for a motion to approve the audit.
I move to approve the audit reports for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Felter, a second by Mr. Shear.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
All right. Now we can move to the consent agenda. Anything anyone would like to pull out for further discussion? If not, I'd seek a motion.
I'd like to pull out 6.04, this is some comments, please.
Yeah?
Please. I just wanted to bring this one out because I was looking through the agenda items and everything else. I want to thank John and the Alatha team to set this up and to be able to look at this going forward because this is something that KCPL is just going to come out there and we're going to have a big increase, and without the experience and the expertise that we have here at the Alatha School District and looking at this and saying, wait a minute, we can look at this differently, we can do something differently, it made a lot of sense. Also, I want to pull out, and I'm going to be on the positive side, I want to pull out, so KCPL picks up a lot of the school districts in the Johnson County area, but as you can see, there was only a few of these that actually stepped up and decided that we're going to work together, so I want to thank Blue Valley, and I want to thank Johnson County Community College and Alatha, and are those the only three that?
Spring Hill.
Spring Hill, all stepped up and worked together as, as a collaborative effort to be able to give the rest of the school districts in the Johnson County area benefits and maybe not as much participation. maybe not as much participation as I would like to see in everybody, but I just wanted to bring that up. And again, thank you, John Allison, because I know you had talked with the board about this when this increase was coming up and saying this is something that they worked at in Wichita and was able to see a difference. And you can see here, over a period of time, we're going to be able to save as much as almost $400,000. So just by taking the time and the effort to do this is going to be a benefit to our organization.
Kudos to Chris. Grass lap in the back there as well. Thank you. Diljoni.
Very good. Other comments? Other items for discussion in the consent agenda? If not, I'd seek a motion.
I move to accept consent. Action items 6.01 to 6.14 is presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Shear, a second by Mr. McCune.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Okay, action bids, contracts, and agreements. I know on 7.01, the activity complex video boards, I think we were going to have a quick presentation.
Good evening. As you just mentioned, we do have an agenda item for you. Take action on the purchase of video boards, but we thought that Mr. Brady and I would frame this discussion a little bit for you before you would take action. Life expectancy of our scoreboards at our complexes are about 10 to 15 years. And as you can see, both of the complexes are right there at their, at their life expectancy. And with that age comes connectivity issues with the wireless controllers. As you can see, the paint's fading. Replacement parts are out of stock, and we seem to be asking for parts a lot more frequently. Bottom line, it's basically time to replace those scoreboards at both complexes. But the recommendation this evening is to move away from the traditional scoreboard and move to video boards at both complexes and to partner with Daktronics, who's been in this space for about 50 years. And we've partnered with them on our gymnasium video boards on the insides of our schools. They hold a state contract that we can access. They, these are very state-of-the-art boards, and it allows us to do a lot of more things than just displace scores. If you're trying to figure out, well, what are they? They're anywhere from Arrowhead to Kaufman Stadium down to college level, and some of the surrounding school districts and in the region have these boards. And the justification for the recommendation is really, obviously, the boards need replacement. But this type of project will open a lot of doors for other events and really kind of help brand our district. But the entire project can be financed through sponsorships. Once you get into this type of board, suddenly, marketing budgets are very interested in advertising on those boards. Local vendors are. And not a single tax dollar or state aid is needed in order to support the program. It also opens up educational opportunities for our kids. We can use it for graduation. Can you imagine each kid coming across the stage and actually projecting their face? Any of our other events, such as track meets or music or band festivals. And it just uses that modern technology. But the one I really want to point out is, you don't think about scoreboards and educational opportunities, but Mr. Brady's going to tell you a little more about those opportunities.
Thank you. And before I get started, I want to introduce Aaron Franken. Aaron is with Daktronics, and we have literally been working with him for five years on this project. We've done exhaustive research. We have visited other schools that have these boards. And we just feel like for the entertainment value and what we're going to be able to do with them are going to be pretty exciting. And Aaron will be here to answer any technical questions that you might have. I want to share a little bit more about the good stuff, the educational opportunities for our kids. Mr. Hutchison talked about the operations and business and finance piece, but this is going to be so awesome for our kids. We have video production classes in all of our high schools and particularly at Olahtha Northwest with our 21st Century Ecom program. Our kids are going to be intricately involved with this. And what this is going to look like is at events, whether it's a football game or a track meet, graduation, they will be up in the press box. And it's going to look, feel like a little bit of a TV studio with, with computer monitors and buttons and bells and whistles that they're going to be pushing to have that scoreboard, video board engaging our community and our fans that will be there. And these kids are typically not the kids that are playing sports or in band or cheer or dancer like that. In fact, some of these kids maybe not even gone to a sporting event in their life, but they are going to help entertain our community with their skill set. The skill set is numerous. In fact, when I was listening to Dr. Dane and her folks talk about Portrait of a Graduate, I'm thinking all those six competencies are going to be experienced by our kids through this video production. And that look behind you with our students prepared for our future vision statement. Once again, this is what we're going to be doing. So video production, camera use, creating sponsor ads, sound, animation, writing, editing, working with different software programs. Our kids will have total exposure to that. And then some of those soft skills are so important in the marketplace. We're going to start helping building those here. Teamwork, project management, leadership and communication, just to name a few. These skills, these kids will be learning through video production and animation and all that will help them get in some colleges, particularly if they want to pursue that. They enhance their resume. And for some of our kids, this will be a future job strand for them, and they're going to get a head start. So what would a video project look like? What could our kids do and show up on a video board at one of our complexes? But I'm going to show you here, there we go, before I click the big button here, this is an 80-second video that was produced by students at Dodge City High School. And this is a pre-game hype video against their arch rival, Great Bend. So this gives you a little feel what their kids are able to do.
Are you ready for it? Are you ready for it? Baby, let's get together, let's get together, let's get together now. Baby, let's get together, let's get together, let's get together now. Are you ready for it?
I don't know about you, but I'm ready to play a ball. It's pretty cool. All right. So let me tell you a bit more about how the business partnership works. This is a very key piece. This is not just leasing and purchasing video boards. We've had some concerns about our sound system at both DAX for quite some time. This involves cameras. This involves installation of all the equipment trained for our students and staff and a myriad of other types of equipment that comes with this. 100% financed through sponsorship dollars. Tax dollars, general state aid will not be used to fund this project. As a result, we will save not thousands of dollars, but 10,000s of dollars. Our partners will exchange their financial support for video board advertising. We're asking our advertisers, if they're our current contributor to our foundation, that we don't want them to take away from their contributions to the foundation. That's first and foremost. This would be using their advertising dollars, not their charitable dollars. There are three support levels. If the anchor sponsors, if you saw on some of your earlier slides, that's the top four static boards that will have their business on it. Then there are the six founding partners, and those are down at the bottom. And then the premier partners are purely digital partners. They don't get any signage on the board, but they may get some PA announcements and maybe their logo and those types of things on the board during a ballgame or other activity. We're asking our sponsors to commit to a five-year plan, and these boards will be paid for during that five-year time period. We'll ask our sponsors to re-opt then for year six through 10. At that point, the income that comes in is 100% profit, and we'll be able to use those funds for other activities or special projects at our, at our DAX. So there's a better picture there of our anchor and founding partners, the signage that goes up. Why we bring this to you now versus a future action item, we'd like to get going on this project. The quicker we can get our advertisers secured, the quicker we can get this installed, we'll start at C-Back, knowing that we have our five graduations there. And we would love to unveil our video board at graduation. And if you can imagine, if you're sitting up in the stands up in a corner, so excited to see your graduate come across that stage, and they look kind of like a pinhead from where you're sitting, no, not anymore. They will be right up there on the board, the beautiful, colorful video board, and it's really going to be an awesome thing. So that's one reason we're bringing it to you now. We would like to have all of our partnerships secured by the end of January and then give Daktronics an opportunity to move forward shortly after that. So I'll stop talking because I could talk all day about this because we're pretty excited about the opportunities and answer any questions that you might have.
Did you mention the life cycle of the board? How long will it last?
Sure, Aaron.
Sure. 10 to 15 years is what we feel comfortable saying. You mentioned Kaufman and Arrowhead. They're at 10 years as we speak. So those are pro stadiums where typically they change those out frequently. So yeah, 10 to 15 years, no problem.
What's the warranty and maintenance on them?
So five years. So for five years, everything will be covered. The first year, we've got to where a tech would be able to come on site. So that would be labor also for the first year. So a year from receiving the equipment, anything goes wrong, we come out free of charge. And then, like I said, everything else is five years. Parts is the warranty after that.
Thanks.
Tim, I want to ask, I know we've talked about this a little bit, but we have the refusal opportunities on certain partners and those types of things, or maybe the people we don't want on the boards and those types of things, correct?
There, we would not partner with any bars, taverns, other establishments that would not be good for our kids to see. Is that what you're alluding to?
Yeah, I mean, those types of things, whatever the establishment might be.
Yeah. If you, also, the businesses that we're targeting, targeting will be banks, insurance companies, educational entities like American Aspire, Johnson County Community College, a couple veterinarian groups, car dealerships. Those are the ones that we're zeroing in right now.
Have we have, have we been able to have some of those, at least preliminary discussions, just saying, hey, this is something that we're thinking about and had sort of hypothetical interest?
Yes.
I assume.
We've planned some seeds, particularly with maybe some key donors, and they seem to be interested. But we'll know a lot more if this group supports us and so we can move forward, start having some additional conversations.
You're talking about we as far as getting the partners. How much effort is that, the school district versus the company?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So getting the partners signed on?
Yeah.
Is that, is that a school district effort, or is that?
Yes. I mean, Daktronics will be part of that. There's a contract that is signed, and they help us with the contract. But the money will actually come into the district, and we'll disperse that then to Daktronics over a five-year time period to pay for the boards.
But will we be outgoing, trying to get the partners?
Yes.
First, they'll be working together. Because of their past experience, they've, they've given us, you know, these, these are good leads, so to speak, as well as conversations with the Chamber of Commerce. They've assisted us in helping identify some, some of our community corporate partners to be able to reach out to. So I, so far as in the initial conversations and just if this should occur, would this be of interest to you? We've, we've had some pretty positive responses.
And we do not intend to proceed until we have 75% of those sponsors signed up. So it's not that we have a tremendous risk that we have to enter into a purchase order before we have the sponsorships. It's really flipped the other way. We'll gain the sponsorships first and then place the.
So that was my question. So you said, so you answered 75. Is that another 25% of liability on us, though? If you get to the 75 and we go forward with this?
I'll stretch it a little bit. It's close to the cost of if we just replace the boards on our own and don't go video if we went traditional.
Our liability would be if that, if that extra 25% would be?
And return on the investment would just take a little, a little bit longer to pay off the boards.
And if I'm an anchor partner at C-Back, I'd also be an anchor partner at O'Donnell as well.
Yeah, it's, basically, it's two for one. I mean, you, if you sign on, you get both complexes.
And will there be in our high schools, say, the 21st Learning Century Learning Academy? Will there be replicas where these students will be learning from or off of, or?
Actually, we have a lot of the equipment already in our, they're doing, they're doing some of this right now in all five buildings because we've got the video boards and the gymnasium. So these kids are learning this, the talent right now.
This is nothing new to them.
No, they're going to get like that. I do want to add a couple more things real quickly. We're also going to do some signage on the backside, not advertising, but we want, and I don't, I don't know of any other high schools that even do this. We're going to have a panel on the backside that says College Boulevard Activity Complex or Olahtha District Activity Complex. Maybe put our, do some branding, maybe our five high school logos on there, our district logo, and we'll have some light on it, too, and just kind of help promote that instead of just seeing eye beams when you drive in. We'll have a kind of a better look.
Do any other local districts have this system?
The only neighboring district that has it is Shawnee Mission, and they've had it for, this is their second year. We've been in constant communication with them. Quite honestly, have learned from some of their trials and errors, and we feel like we've been very thorough and we've kind of learned from their mistakes, and we'll be, we'll be rock solid.
Do you think we'll be competing for the same advertisers, or?
Actually, they went kind of a little bit of a different advertising route. They got, did not rely as much as Daktronics as we are, and not all of their sponsor filled. So they went a different, a little bit different route, and I think we're going to take a better route.
So Tim, so I've had the chance to see those over at Shawnee for the football season, and the boards themselves look awesome. And the video on it is awesome. But sure, I was going to bring that up because they did, some of their advertising spots have not been filled. That's why I was curious about us filling up to 75% and what that other 25%. So we've got a different model than what they're using as far as what we're trying to do.
Yes.
Did you, when you were looking at the five-year contract, that kind of struck me as a little bit long. What were the conversations you had on that? That just seems like kind of a long five-year contract.
That's one way it's affordable, is to spread over five years versus Daktronics saying, we want all of our money upfront. They've been very gracious to say, we'll let you pay for interest-free over a five-year time period.
Other questions? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I could ask, as we look through bids, contracts, and agreements in Section Seven, I'm happy to go through each one of these individually, but if there's others that we have some questions on, we could do discussion and then take them as a group? If that's?
I would just, so we had, so there was that one and 7.11 and 7.12, maybe the future active items on that. If John or if you have somebody that would just speak a little bit, the 7.11 and 7.12?
Sure.
Just to give us a little more up here.
Yeah.
Apologize, apologize for not having future action items, but it's that time of year any of you in sales, suddenly discounts start arising. So as those offers were made, Cognos is a, is a software we have looked at in the past. It, it's, works with our Business Plus software, both on student and financial side. And it's really kind of a report writer that enhances our ability for creating reports and just data mining. And they have offered us a discount if we could place that order before December, the end of December. And then the denial service attack protection, I've, I've talked to Matt a dozen times. I'll try to do this right. In essence, it's, it's a cluster of servers, bad guys trying to just slow down your network by syncing those servers on, on yours. This service basically does a lot of diagnostics to see, hey, I think that's happening, switch to these servers, not on our site, in a Kansas City site, so that it doesn't bog down your traffic while they assess whether, if this is a true threat or not. And that, that service has been pretty popular on the coast, if I recall properly, and now it's hitting the Kansas City market. And as you know, it seems like we always have to step up our In essence, it's a cluster of servers, bad guys trying to just slow down your network by syncing those servers on yours. This service basically does a lot of diagnostics to see, hey, I think that's happening, switch to these servers, not on our site, in a Kansas City site, so that it doesn't bog down your traffic while they assess whether, if this is a true threat or not. And that service has been pretty popular on the coast, if I recall properly, and now it's hitting the Kansas City market. And as you know, it seems like we always have to step up our game one more notch to try and protect our networks. So that's what that service is. It attaches on to our internet service provider, CCI.
John, on either one of those two, is either one of those replacing something we have today? Or this is new services on both of them?
No, this is new. This would both be new service.
I could tell you that the denial of service attack protection, being in a district where we became a target, literally crippled us for over two weeks. It was very expensive to combat because we didn't have some of these things in place. And sadly, is just becoming more and more of the cost of doing business since we rely and our community relies so heavily on everything from lunch to checking bus schedules, all those types of things through our network. So I think this, you can never say you're 100% secure, but seeing how often this is happening and knowing what the impact can be, we felt like it was something we need to put in place sooner than later.
And that would make sense. And again, the reporting tools, so you don't, we don't have a reporting tool today that this is replacing?
We do, but we have to do a lot of stuff in SQL just to try and manipulate and pull out of the databases. This is an add-on module that has existed the entire time we've owned the software. We just didn't pull the trigger. We built some of our standard reports, did what we could. Now we're getting more in-depth and can't get at it without constantly writing custom, so to speak, through SQL to extract data. This layer is on top and gives us those abilities.
It's very user-friendly, so that right now, where all those functions have to be channeled through individuals with expertise with relational database, be able to take a look at. The Cognos, even I can write some queries to be able to dig into the data. It's pretty straightforward, which will allow us, as we begin to look more and more and wanting to align our priorities and our budgets as we think about the strategic plan moving forward, more of that programmatic-based budgeting component. It should allow us to be able to get information more quickly and to do it more easily as we move forward.
Is this tool able to be used in more different services that we have? Or different databases that we have? Or how does this?
Our student database, our financial database, yes. It's through Power School, which, Power School is what drives our student system and our financial systems.
Others? If not, I'd seek a motion to approve these.
I would move to approve action items, bids, contracts, and agreements, 7.31 versus 7.12.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. McCune, a second by Mrs. Felter.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Shear?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
And you can see the list of future action items that we'll take a look at next month. Along with written information, parent-teacher conference totals, and the December Head Start Director's Report. If we have no comments on those, I'll move to topics for discussion from the board.
9.01, parent-teacher conference total.
Sure.
Is there, John, is there an opportunity to talk a little bit about, more in-depth somewhere in the future about? Again, we get great participation in elementary and as it gets older and older. And again, we've got, some of it's because we've got great tools and things such as that. But I've had conversations with some of the parents and some faculties and things such as that about, is there different things that we can potentially do with parent-teacher conferences? I don't know if that's something that we're talking about, if we're looking at, if we can look at it a little bit differently, be more effective with it. Have we had those discussions and is that something that we can prepare and possibly bring to the board of different ideas possibly?
We can definitely bring back some ideas. It's particularly as you progress from elementary to middle to high, you lose some of the participation numbers. Professional Council, that's actually one of the subcommittees that we'll be focusing, talking about our conferences. So I think as they progress through their work, it would be very easy for us to come back here in the future and be able to give you an update about some of those ideas and be able to just bring you up to speed on some of those thoughts. You know, one of the key pieces is the information we need to get from our parents. And what makes that a valued time? And what might that schedule look like that would engage our, particularly our secondary parents to a greater degree? So it's a conversation and a work in progress, and we'll just plan on bringing it back to the board for a future report when we've made some more progress on that.
Thank you. Any other topics for discussion from the board? Seeing none, Superintendent comments? Mr. Allison?
It's hard to believe that we're almost approaching the end of the first semester, but we're just a few days away from that. And really, my comments this evening are, again, to say thank you to all of those that were involved in the math adoption selection. They put a great deal of work and diligence into making sure that we're going to be able to move forward and meet the needs of our students. And I'm excited about that opportunity. Again, the strategic plan group, and many of you attended at least one, if not all of those meetings. And as Mr. Wickliff said earlier, you trusted in us looking at a different process and thinking about the future differently. And I do want to say thank you for being willing to take that risk and to look out as we think about the class of 2032. And we've got a lot of work to do. This is just the, this is the easy part now. It's rolling up our sleeves, defining what does this look like? You know, how are we going to measure it? And aligning all the, from financial resources to PD to all those things that we're going to have to do to be successful doing this. So I just want to say thank you for that. And that concludes my remarks for this evening.
Thank you. I understand we do not need an executive session tonight?
That is correct.
Awesome. With that, we're done.